Attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you would please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call please, Ben.
Granquist.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Clausen. Muren.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
House.
Here.
File.
Here.
Right, I'd look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second, if no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
And a motion to approve the full agenda.
So move your order.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Okay, we move to public hearings and related action, item number sixteen. To start, I would look for a motion to adjourn as mayor and council and convene as Board of Equalization.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion is second, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Okay, now open this public hearing for the Board of Equalization to hear and equalize special assessments for sanitary sewer extension district number two forty-seven, South Highway eighty-one. And to kick this off and introduce the subject, Steve, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Before you today is consideration for ordinance. I can't write ordinance here. Ordinance number fifty-five-ten, and this is the public hearing portion thereof. The ordinance number fifty-three-thirty-two creating the sanitary sewer district was passed December first of twenty-fourteen, recorded at the county December tenth of twenty-fourteen. Following that date, we've completed the plans for construction of the sewer district and then entered into a construction contract. That contract was completed in July of twenty-sixteen. Since that time, we have been working on completing the assessment package, which was published on November sixth of this year. We are, the project itself was three point two million dollars, three million two hundred eighty-eight thousand, six hundred forty-nine dollars and fourteen cents. Before you today is a package that would assess one million five hundred eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred nineteen dollars and twenty-six cents of that, so a little less than fifty percent of the project is before you to be assessed to those landowners that would be adjacent to the project. Currently, we have twelve individual connections to that system as of late last week. If there's more summary needed, I would be glad to provide more, but that's kind of the nuts and bolts of it.
Can, Steve, can you talk a little bit about, you said, a little less than fifty percent of the project is financed through assessments, can you talk about the other half?
The city, over that last year from completion of the project until now, we've been working to try and find methods to bring that assessment cost down to the individuals. Covidian has put two hundred and fifty thousand towards the project, Madison County has put thirty thousand dollars to the project. In addition, the city is going to be picking up the airport portion, which would be included in a eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars, and it would be picked up by the city, and then through general obligation debt service, another five hundred sixty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty cents would also be picked up by the city. So, you know, recognizing the burden that these projects have on our citizens, we've been searching for ways to try and bring down that total project cost from an assessable perspective.
Okay, thank you, Steve, and this was a process that unfolded over months, there was a significant amount of discussion involved in working with some of the property owners to bring that number down, okay? Any questions? Counsel, Steve, on that. It is a public hearing, so at this point, we invite anyone wishing to come forward with comment to do so. If not, close the hearing. We need you to come up to the microphone then, please.
I don't know if this is the right place to.
Sure, yep, if this is a public hearing, so if you'd start by telling us who you are, and there should be a sheet in front of you to sign.
Name, Charles Schlumer. I own Newell Riverside property, and then a little bit of that, there's a little lake out there, and I own a little bit of that, too. I'm never good at talking in front of a lot of people, so I apologize, but, oh, I'd say about a year ago, Shane came up to me and said about what I was going to be assessed for this project, and it just really took me back, because I saw the work being done there, but I guess no one really ever came out and told me what my liability was going to be out there. And I think with the liability that I have at hand, a letter at least telling me what my liability was going to be, so I could at least protest, or at least give you my two cents on the whole thing, would have been appropriate, and, you know, I, you're asking me to give away a college education for, you know, and it just, to me, that's just crazy, it just, it makes no sense to me. I feel like if that property would have been owned by somebody else sitting up here, some things might have been a little different, because that's a huge, huge liability on my part, and I just, to me, it just, I don't think it's right. You know, as far as value goes, you know, it's one hook up into a pipe, you know, it's not a, the way that that's assessed is just, I'm not getting any different value than anybody else along there. I'm all for Norfolk to grow, this has been a great community for me, and I appreciate everything that this community's done for me, but the way that this was handled, in my opinion, no one gave me any foresight on this, to tell me what I was jumping into. I saw them building it, but I had no clue that I was going to be getting a bill, and the size of that bill that I'm going to be getting is just, I tell you, that's, I don't know, to me, it just isn't right. I, I don't even know if I can develop on that land, I mean, I'm in a flood zone. I don't know, to me, that's, not even be able to build out there, and to be assessed for what I'm being assessed for, it just, to me, is just not, not right, but that's just my opinion.
Charles, I appreciate you coming forward, I know the process has not been easy for a lot of people, that communication upfront, I think, is something that was important, and so if we, at the time, failed any of that, then, you know, that's not right, to be honest, but you did have, right here, you said you did have some direct conversation at the beginning of it with city staff.
No, the only time that I had any knowledge of this is after, well, Shane came up to me, he goes, hey, do you realize what your liability is out there, what, you know, and this is after that project's been done. I said, well, no, and he gave me a figure, I'm like, are you, well, it's no different than if you're given a bill, that same bill, I mean, that's, to me, that's, it just, someone should at least told me, hey, we're going to go through here, this is what it's going to, these are the rough estimates of what it's going to cost, maybe you should come to a meeting and be part of this, so that, or at least so I know, now whether I chose to come to a meeting or not, but at least I would have, I would have said my two cents way long time ago, and it just, I don't know, I want Norfolk to grow, I want prosperity, this is a great community, but somehow, it just, it needs to be, as far as I'm concerned, it's value, you know, I get one hole into that darn thing, just like in anybody else, so wherever that, whatever that value is, that, you know, that's one thing, but unfortunately, my property goes north and south, so, you know, that's, my whole property does, so, anyways, that's my two cents.
Thank you, Charles, and I was asking for some clarification on the process in terms of notice, we are, the city is required by law to give notice in writing to property owners as the district is formed and created, and our, you know, if staff has any insight or guidance into that, that process, the communications of how this was established, and the process of trying to work with property owners to lessen that burden, as we started out, we were much more significantly reliant on assessments than where we are at this point, as Steve mentioned, kicking off this conversation, we're, less than half of the project is being financed now by assessments on properties, so Andy, Clint, or Steve, a little bit about the communications process on this, and what we followed, and then maybe a little bit about the conversations we had in working with property owners to rearrange the financing structure of this.
I'm going to speak a little bit generically here to that question, this was an ordinance that was passed in December of twenty-fourteen, and so there certainly would have been a public hearing portion of that prior to the passing of that ordinance, and that would have been published in advance of the meeting, and would have been a time that public would come and present any concerns they would have. At that time, I cannot tell you what might, may or may not have been available in terms of information related to the cost of a project, but I would certainly assume that there would have been an initial engineer's estimate that would have put a cost on that total
So, there has been previous public hearings on this, and again, notice in writing to property owners in that district was given on the process. We still are in public hearings, so anyone else willing to come forward?
When did Charles buy that land?
I don't know that.
Charles?
I have to, I'll look, but it's been three years ago, four years ago, something like that, and, you know, I know when things are put in the papers, that's, I mean, that's a good way to advertise, but when you're throwing around a liability like what you're doing, you know, you kind of have to be able to figure out what my property is and what my liability is, it would be nice to at least be given a, you know, heads up, I mean, I wouldn't have missed one meeting.
It is a public hearing, so if you have a comment, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Carol Warner, and we live on sixteen hundred North Airport Road, we bought our property June of two thousand thirteen. When we bought the property, the first special meeting about discussion on this, we never got a notice. We were having problems with our mail being sent back, so it might have returned saying address unknown or person not known, and if we would have known that this was going to happen, we definitely would have been here, we would have been doing petitions to say, no, we don't want it. We have five hundred feet, five hundred feet of property, and at the time, we came to one of the meetings, after it had been decided that it was going to be done, the assessment was going to be like ninety dollars a foot, that's like sixty thousand, I think, with us. Now, I don't know what it is now, what, does anybody know what the final?
Final assessment, eighty-three dollars and seventy-five cents.
Okay, all right, but still, we have two hundred and some odd feet, that's a pasture, our house is just on a little piece, and we're in industrial zone, so we can't build on that land, because it's zoned industrial. So that piece of property over there is being charged this for no reason whatsoever. We also have the airport to worry about, who keeps throwing hints that they're going to take our property because of that right of way of their airstrip, so we're going to be assessed this, we've already paid a premium for our land with our life savings, because it was something that we really wanted to retire on, now we're going to get this on top of it, and who knows if the airport will ever come through with this threat they have hanging over our head. So, I'm with the other guy, we didn't get the original notices, so we couldn't protest it, now we're hearing that they're going to be doing water, so as soon as we hear that one, we are going to go around and have petitions signed that we don't want the water. Now, Covidian is paying two hundred and fifty thousand, that's nice, but that's a big chunk. What about Medelman's? Medelman's has just a little piece on the north and south side, are they getting paid, charged just for that, and they're going to be doing that whole housing complex? That's a question we'd like to know, because that seems kind of unfair, that they're going to get charged for just that going north and south on the front of two seventy-five, is that true? We don't know. Are they going to put that whole housing complex in for that small amount of money, where we're getting charged more, and we're not being able to build on ours? So that's just things that we want to know, or, as I know, it's too late to have you do anything about it, but that is our concerns.
Okay, thank you, Carol.
Steve, do you want to touch on the Medelman assessment? Because it's not a small assessment.
Yeah, I can sure touch on that. Medelman specifically is being assessed for parcel four at eighteen thousand. As a function, you want me to restrict that to Medelman, or you want me to include Elkhorn Paving?
Elkhorn Paving also.
Elkhorn Paving, Elkhorn Paving is being assessed one hundred, two thousand, ninety-one dollars and twenty-five cents for that portion of property along Bonita Drive. So those are the two, those are the two for.
Restate both those parcels.
Medelman for lot four, which would be on the north on eighty-one there, his assessment's eighteen thousand, six dollars and twenty-five cents, and for Elkhorn Construction Company along Bonita Drive, his assessment is one hundred, two thousand, ninety-one dollars and twenty-five cents.
I believe there's another.
Do you have two more? What are those, Paul? Okay, this is on Bonita Drive as well, so yeah, he's got two more properties on the south side of Bonita, sixteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-five cents for one of those, and the other one, seventeen thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents. So those would be the, those would be the four parcels that Paul Medelman would have Just to make a clarification, or, any water and sewer that goes into our, my development there will be paid by me, and not, won't be any burden on anybody in the surrounding properties, so, all of those interior, the interior infrastructure, water, sewer streets will be paid from the development itself, so we'll just be tapping in. I would also certainly note that for public interest, the map of all of the assessments is included in the agenda pack that is published out there for, you know, on the city's website, so you could see a map of everybody and their assessments.
Is that possible for us to put that up right now? Can we do that?
It would be page one twenty-three, Beth.
We're still in public hearing, so any other comments welcome at this point. So, the, yeah, we'll have to have you come forward again, Charles.
I know that, you know, I want him to do his thing, and I want to see the city grow, and I want to see, I love to see a development there, I mean, I think that's wonderful, I do, but when we break it down to value, you know, some are getting a lot of value and some aren't, and I'm talking about Covidian, too, you know, I mean, they're going to be using that thing more than other people, so of course, you know, I can understand that, but for the common person out there, that's, you know, going to be pumping five gallons through a day, as opposed to five hundred gallons, or a thousand, or more, I mean, we're talking about two different things, and so, I know that whenever something like this happens, no one wants to pay the fiddler, I understand that, but when you break it down to value, I think you need to, you know, who's really getting the value out of it? And, like I said, it's not that I don't want to pay, because that's not it, but I also want to make sure that, that, you know, people are paying for what they get, and it's, you know, the amount of length of pipe that's in front of you, you know, it had to go through my property to get to the next person, so it just, to me, that's not the right way to be building this one out.
Thank you, Charles. I will say, as part of this process, we took a look at the history of financing such major infrastructure projects in the community, and traditionally, Norfolk's been pretty heavily reliant on assessments to do that, and some of the early numbers proposed for this project were quite high on assessments, I think we started out at a hundred and thirty dollars a square foot. The linear foot, the council, when presented those numbers early on, said that that is a burden, that's too much of a burden on property owners who happen to lie in the path. Now, let's go back to the drawing board and try to be creative in finding some ways to lessen that, and that's where I think some of these commitments from industry, from the county, the city got creative in how it was able to finance some of this, Steve mentioned the general obligation bonds, utility rates, we tried to spread out the costs and burden of this as much as possible to lessen that burden on individual property owners. Is it a perfect process? I don't think it was, rarely do you see perfect processes in the public setting, but I do want to point out, and that was just shown again, when this was, this ordinance was first heard and established, it was December first, two thousand fourteen, a public hearing was conducted and held, notices of property owners were distributed at that time about the creation of the district, so we did, and that's the process of doing these things, have requirements that we had to fulfill to make sure that property owners were informed about what was going on, so that all shut up, and welcome any other comments as part of the public
I'm Barb Frederick, I live at, we live at two, twelve nineteen Sherwood Road, and in the letter you stated that if we had grievances, to write a letter to you, and was wondering how that's going to work, are you going to try and fix the problems that they didn't fix when they finished up on the road?
Tell me which letter you're talking about, or which you're referencing.
Saying that if we had any grievances, to get the letter in by the twentieth, and we did write a letter on the two issues that we had, and we're just wondering, you know, is that what will be decided tonight, or will you guys talk about it and get back to people, or how does it work?
Okay, Clint, or Steve, can you talk a little bit about the process?
Earlier this afternoon.
Oh, notice of public hearing?
Earlier this afternoon, we received some email information from Barb with regard to some weeds, or lack of grass, I guess, that has developed along a stretch of her property, and it sounds like maybe it's some piece of concrete sidewalk or driveway or something that was.
Right, that cracked right away, and?
It appears had to crack, so since that came in probably mid-afternoon, I have had staff take a look at that, and from the notes that I've received back, looks like we hydroceded that, and then after the hydroseeding went back and drilled seed back in a second time, Barb has indicated that she has watered that both times, so why the grass didn't develop, I don't know, but we're certainly, we're certainly want to look at that with you and get that back to the condition it was prior to the project.
Okay, and then about the water line that's going to be coming through, do you guys have information on that for us?
Sure, the water line that you're hearing about is a water mine that's going to water, the water main to Medelman's Lake subdivision, the main will come south of the river about three hundred feet, three, four hundred feet south of the river and stop, and then it'll cross from US Highway eighty-one, it'll kind of follow the south side of the river over to First Street, and connect into a main that's been brought down First Street, that is as far as that water project is going to go in terms of bringing any water south.
So there is no, or anything going in the works now to bring water down to Sherwood Road, to?
No, no, ma'am.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Anyone else wishing to make public comment? Seeing none, I will move to close this public hearing, and would look for a motion to adjourn as the Board of Equalization and reconvene as mayor and council.
Make the motion.
Motion is second, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Okay, then move to item number seventeen on the agenda, and look for a motion to consider approval of ordinance number fifty-five-ten, levying special assessments in sanitary sewer extension district number two forty-seven.
Director, I'd move consideration of ordinance number fifty-five-ten.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. Steve, or Andy, anything else you'd like to contribute to this before the council considers the ordinance?
I don't have anything additionally additional to add, if I had to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council on this? I don't think I have any further comments about the process than what?
I guess, as far as comments about the process, as was noted by Steve with the timeframe and everything. Steve with the timeframe and everything that went on along, along with, I mean, the project was, has basically been, was 95% or more complete last year almost at this time, and so it's taken about a year to get to this point here, plus it's taken a, a lot, a lot of meetings to assess concerns that this council had about assessments that way, and there's, I believe this body went way far out of the box in, in, in how we assessed. We took exception with some of the lineal footages and how to charge those on out, and so we laid a lot more of the burden back on the city and/or, the city naturally is a constituents, the rest of the constituents in, in the city, those of us that may live north of Norfolk Avenue even are paying for some of this that way. The other thing that falls in there too is that normally I believe our timeframe for payments on these have not been near to the extent that they are now, this is a 20-year potential payback on it that way, so historically, I don't believe this body's gone much over eight or 10 years, and you'd have to cur...
I think we've actually gone about five years on sewer extension districts historically.
So that's, that's 400% over and above that way to make, to lessen the burden that way. Now, is it a burden? It's a burden, but it's also the potential for development and/or recouping that also sits out there, so, yeah, it's, it seems like a big pill at this point in time, but it also is over a 20-year time period too, so...
Hey, again, that speaks to the recognition by the council and, and staff that thinking a little bit differently about how we financed this project was important to lessen that burden on property owners, and, you know, this wasn't something that somebody jumped up and said, "Oh, I think we need sewer systems south of the river," this is important, this project as a whole is important for the long-term growth and development of Norfolk. The South 81 corridor currently has a, a good amount of industry and commercial enterprises, see more housing development, and so it's, it's necessary for our city to grow, and with that growth comes a need for good infrastructure, and so I, I do want to echo Congressman, or Councilman Langy's, I just promoted you, Councilman, or de, or demoted you, his sentiments that we, we were cognizant of that and, and tried to make it the most fair framework for, for financing this project as, as possible, so. Any other comments or discussion, council? If not, I would ask for a short title, please, Beth.
An ordinance levying special assessments upon the lots, parts of lots, lands and real estate abutting upon and adjacent to and specially benefited by the improvements in Sewer Extension District Number 247 of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to defray the costs of said improvements and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5510 carries on first reading.
We, we'd request that the council pass this on second and third because we calculate interest up to the levy date.
That being said, Your Honor, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass this ordinance on second and third reading.
Okay, motion in second to suspend the rules, if no discussion on that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5510 carries on second and third.
Okay, we move to item number 18, and again, we begin looking for a motion to adjourn as mayor and council and convene as Board of Equalization.
I'll make the motion.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, motion in second, if no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Okay, then I will open this public hearing for the Board of Equalization to hear and equalize special assessments for Sanit, Sanitary Sewer Extension District Number 248, East Highway 35. And Steve, once a good, once again, could you kick this off for us, please?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, council members, Senatorial Sewer District 248 was passed by ordinance number 5398, which created the ord, created the sewer district June 6th of 2016, recorded County Courthouse June 20th, 2016. At that same meeting on June 6th, plans were complete and authorized for bid, that project was completed on September, in September of 2016, for a total cost of $30,448.87. That, that project sits along Highway 35, it's on the west side of Highway 35, south of Vista Road and north of the extension of El Camino Road. There are three properties over there and a business, one of those, one of those private residents had a, had a septic tank failure, contacted the city. The city staff at that time investigated the situation out there and determined that a sanitary sewer district was the proper means to, to correct the failed septic system and would allow for future connection of the other two systems. In looking at it, I know I've had a couple contacts from landowners out there, one of the, those three landowners has connected to the, the system already. One of the landowners did come in and expressed some concern, again, about the level of communication that occurred through the process. There is a, the city does have a 12-inch sewer main that runs west of those properties, and from a distance perspective, that would have been shorter for them to connect to, but it is a 12-inch interceptor, and we prefer not to connect residences to our interceptors, we prefer to connect those into larger collectors, and so that was the route the city staff went. Again, the project was completed in September of 16, and currently there are, the assessments would be $10,149.63 per resident.
Barry, you got any questions for Steve? This is a public hearing, anyone wishing to make comment can do so now? Seeing none, I will move to close the hearing and look for a motion to adjourn as the Board of Equalization and reconvene as mayor and council.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Okay, motion in second, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Okay, that moves us to item number 19, look for a motion to, to consider approval of ordinance number 5511, levying special assessments in sanitary sewer extension district number 248.
Your Honor, I'd offer for consideration ordinance number 5511.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay. Any discussion, council, any questions or comments on this?
Mr. Mayor, I would just, I would state, in the same things Councilman Langy stated there, that this assessment is a 20-year assessment versus our, our more traditional five or seven-year assessments, so we have extended that, that longer period of time to this as well.
And what, and what was the total assessed value again?
Total assessed value is $30,448.87.
Okay. All right. Discussion, comments? If not, short title, please, Beth.
An ordinance levying special assessments upon the lots, parts of lots, lands and real estate abutting upon and adjacent to and especially benefited by the improvements in Sewer Extension District Number 248 of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to defray the cost of said improvements and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form. All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5511 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5511 on second and third reading.
Second.
Okay, motion in second to suspend the rules, if no discussion on that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5511 carries on second and third.
Okay. Moves us to item number 20, we'll open a public hearing at the request of William and Barney Begaman to consider a zoning change from A agricultural district to RR rural residential district on property generally located half-mile west of 25th Street on the north side of Eisenhower Avenue. And to kick this off, Val, would you give us some background, please?
All right, thank you. Like you said, this is a zone change from Ag to RR, it is north of Eisenhower, kind of where the potential Blackberry Heights preliminary plat that you all saw, it's kind of across the street from there, and the reason for this, you will see if this zone change passes on three readings tonight, the next item on the agenda is a plat for a five-acre lot, and that's what they want to rezone from Ag to RR, so they want to take out a five-acre piece of property out of a 70-acre Ag piece of property right now and only rezone that five-acre piece, that's the potential plat in the next item.
Okay, thanks, Val. Any questions for Val and Matt? Is it public here? Go ahead.
Question, Val, I was looking at the plat, trying to figure out where it was at, and that, so the, the property to the south of this, is that part of the 70 acres, or is that...
No, that would be 10 acres that it would make up an 80, so there's a 70-acre piece and then that 10-acre piece that was platted off without a plat essentially, because it's been over 10 acres, I believe, years ago. So Bill Begaman's actual house is 10 acres there in that southwest corner, and then the 70 acres goes up and around that to the north. And so what they're trying to piece off is five acres to the north of that 10-acre piece. I mean, I can pull it up if that would be helpful for you.
I've got it here, I, I was just seeing, a flag was what I was seeing, so...
Yeah, and what came out of the preliminary plat that went through Planning Commission was they were originally suggesting a 16-foot flag to get a driveway up and behind that 10-acre existing house, and we suggested extending that to at least 30 feet instead of 16 feet, so it's at least half of a street, that if that does develop later, you at least have half of a right-of-way there as part of the flag.
Val, can you talk a little bit, a little bit about how this meets with the comprehensive plan and the discussion during the planning commission?
Technically, the zone change is not in compliance with the comprehensive plan because the comp plan still calls for this area to be agriculture, because at this time we had enough single-family detached acreages for what we proposed the next 10 to 15 years' worth of growth to be, which is just to the south of Eisenhower, but it's a potential, I mean, Norfolk is growing to the north and the west, but right now, the comp plan calls for this to remain Ag.
So is it public hearing? Anyone wishing to come forward can do so now?
Evening. Hi, I'm Bill Begaman, and basically what we're doing is, where we live, there was, we took off 10 acres to start with 20-some years ago to build our house, what we're doing now is replacing the old farmhouse that's there on the farm place, and to do that, my, my son is, is putting the house in there, and we've reduced it to five, we could go ahead and do it with 20, but we basically need it taken off just so he can get a loan and, and go through in the process, not, actually, we're upgrading the property, and...
And Jim, if you take a look at the plat, we, that 30-foot, if you, we've reserved that for future use, for, for road use, so that you can come back and replat it, some, you want to get in there and have your 60-foot road, 30-foot on each side of that line, you'll have it.
Right. No, I was, I was just seeing that, I was...
Okay.
Flags always kind of bother me to an extent, but I see what you're doing, so, along with...
It's, we, we took it that, one, one of the possibilities, we were talking about developing more than one lot, four or five lots, and we went through the planning commission, and they thought for the future planning, the best thing for us to do is to put, just to do the one lot and leave the 30-foot so that you'd have, you have a road. Any better, any questions?
That remains to be the, that's the plan then now, just the one lot?
One lot.
One lot, right?
Yes.
One lot, two houses?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to come forward on this? Okay, if not, we'll move to, well, ask Beth first for a planning commission report.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on November 7th, 2017 at the request of William and Bonnie Begaman for the zoning change from A to RR and recommended approval on the request on a nine-to-zero vote.
Okay, with that, I will close the hearing and move to item number 21, look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5512 approving his zoning change from A to RR on property generally located half-mile west of 25th Street on the north side of Eisenhower Avenue.
I'll make the motion.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay. Counsel, any further discussion on this, questions or comments? If not, short title, please, Beth.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5512 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I move we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5512 on second and third.
Okay, motion in second to suspend the rules, if no further discussion, please vote.
All councilmen, members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5512 carries on second and third.
Okay, moves us to item number 22, look for a motion to consider resolution 2017-83 approving the final plat and subdivision agreement of Begaman's addition.
Your Honor, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on this, council? Comments, questions? Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance 2017-83 carries.
Okay. Since it looks like everybody's having so much fun, we'll move on to the regular agenda. Item number 23, look for a motion to consider approval of change order number two with Stay Built Construction Company Incorporated for the micro-surfacing and armor coat 2017 project resulting in a net decrease of $103,258.45.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay. Steve, you want to kick this off for us, please?
Mr. Mayor, this is a, a reasonable, a reasonable decrease to the project, so I do want to review what's going on here. There were four segments within the community that we took out of our original contract, micro-surfacing contract, those are Georgia Avenue from First Street to Third Street, and we, we removed that, we are in the, in the process here of preparing the plans and specifications for paving of Georgia Avenue next summer, and that would include Second Street from Georgia to Sycamore as well, so those came out. The third prod, the third stretch that came out was Brosch Avenue from First to Fifth Street, and then due to the work on Norfolk Avenue and Cottonwood... And then due to the work on Norfolk Avenue and Cottonwood, the same time the microsurfacing contractor was, was ready to get into that area, happened to be the timeframe that we were working on closing up that intersection and paving that, and with the equipment we had on site, it would have destroyed any microsurfacing we would have placed. So we removed that from the contract as well. That is the summary of the changes then that would total a hundred and three thousand.
Okay. Counsel, any questions on these changes? Typically, we don't see a change order resulting in a decrease in the contract, so. If no questions or discussion on that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay. Item number twenty-four, look for a motion to consider approval to award a contract to Myers Construction Incorporated of Broken Bow, Nebraska, for the West Highway two seventy-five sewer extension project for an amount of seven hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars, fifty cents, and approval of change order number one resulting in a net decrease of six hundred and twenty-six dollars.
I'll make the motion, your honor.
Second.
Okay. Steve, can you tell us about this one as well, please?
Certainly. This would be the contract then to finish the sanitary sewer extensions over to Thirty-seventh Street and terminate them at a manhole that they found Point subdivision would then connect to. Olson's and Associates is the engineer on the project. We had four very good bids in overall on the project, ranging from eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty cents as a high down to the seven hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine fifty as a low. After review of the apparent low bidders, Olson's is recommending award a contract to Myers Construction.
Another big infrastructure expansion project helping facilitate development in our southwest corner. Any questions, comments, counsel on this?
I could address the change order one has to do with us, about a twenty foot change in the, a section of the alignment, and so we're just flipping out some different sized pipes in there that result in that change.
So when they did that change, Steve, the only reason I ask is because the, the first and second bid are quite close. Did they do a recalc on it with the changes that way?
No, we would, we would accept, we would, we would still have to accept the apparent low bid, looking at that.
Okay, they would have still been low is what I'm getting at.
It wouldn't have, it wouldn't have made that thirteen thousand dollar change.
Okay, that's, I saw it and I didn't run the numbers, but I was noticing the unit prices were, there were some difference in them, so. But I, I just figured that Olson's probably had ran that, so.
Do you have a projected timeline for completion on this project as of now?
Okay. In time for Fountain Point.
May two thousand and eighteen?
Yeah, in time for Fountain Point to connect, early summer.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions? Discussion, counsel? If not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay, item number twenty-five, would look for a motion to consider resolution number twenty-seventeen dash seventy-six related to the appeal of a conditional use permit for Alvin G. Beckman to operate a commercial dog kennel at fifty-three oh one West Benjamin Avenue. Resolution number twenty-seventeen dash seventy-six was tabled at the November sixth, two thousand seventeen city council meeting. So we would first look for a motion to pull off the table in order to proceed.
Second.
No discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
So now what's in front of the council is version A of resolution number twenty-seventeen dash seventy-six, which would effectively reverse the, the planning commission's grant, granting of a conditional use permit for the dog kennel. So. We need a motion to be made on that. It's already, okay, so that, that motion is on the table and up for discussion at this point.
Was that, was that motion on the table or was?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that was for the reversal then, so.
Reversal, yeah. Version, version A is before us right now. Maybe as, as background, Val, can you, can you sum up, try to sum up some of the discussion that we had at the last meeting and the planning commission discussion on this issue to this point?
Sure. What we heard last time and what was before planning commission was a conditional use permit for a commercial dog kennel. And what the planning commission essentially had put in the conditional use permit was a limit of adult dogs, how many litters they could have each year, and to try to control some of that. We did not get into the barking dog aspect because that was harder to control. We thought that the amount of dogs would probably handle that. And then what did not come up at planning commission but came up at city council last time was the covenants for Deer Hollow. And just as a reminder, the city does not enforce covenants, and so that's why the planning commission gave the conditional use permit for a commercial dog kennel.
Okay, thanks, Val. Any questions or comments from the council on this? Again, what's before us right now is resolution to reverse the planning commission's conditional use permit. And would, at this point, we, we heard a lot of testimony at the last meeting on this, but I do want to allow for some discussion proponents or opponents of this to come forward, and we'll, we'll limit that discussion for a few minutes here. We were here two weeks ago for about, I think, an hour and a half on this, so do want to allow opportunity for any further discussion from the public. Waving us off. Okay, all right. Counsel, it's decision time. Can I kick it off with discussion or we go straight to vote?
So a, a yes vote would be a vote to reverse the planning commission's approval of the cup, is that correct?
Yes, yes. And as a process, and Clint, or Beth, correct me if I'm wrong, should that fail, you have two other versions. Version B, which is to affirm the planning commission's conditional use permit, or version C, which is to in some way modify what the, what the planning commission brought forward.
So we're, we're going to go through and vote on each?
No.
Let me, if I may. First of all, version A was assigned reverse. Version B was approved. Version C was modified because that's the order in which they're in the city code, so that's where that came from. So what you have before you as version A is the reversal. You can vote on that. If you approve that, if, if, if you were to approve version A, you're done with resolution twenty-seventeen dash seventy-six. You also, if, if you go ahead and vote on it and you don't pass version A, you can then go on and act on either version B or version C. Okay? One of the, so the other option that you have available, and then we'll enter any questions you have. The other option you have available, version A was on there just because of, to deal with the agenda last, last time. You can also, as a body, amend from version A to version B or to version C if you would be so inclined.
Basically gives you the option of voting on whichever version you want first. I mean, the default option right now is for reverse, but it doesn't have to be that way, which is, I think, what Clint just said. So there's a motion in second now on version A. I'm not hearing any discussion.
Is there one?
Yes.
Because it came off table.
Yeah.
Okay, I got you.
I guess the most troubling thing to me about it is if the idea is, is that we're, that we're defeating this solely on the basis of it being, being in objection to the protective covenants. Again, protective covenants, even though it was presented to us that, you know, they're out there and we're supposed to help enforce them, they're, they're not what we're supposed to be enforcing. If we're objecting to, because a protective covenant can be changed at any time with a vote of, of the, of the participants that way. I believe I'm correct there, Clint. So this could be passed and those protective covenants could be changed next week, and then it would, the protective covenants weren't, weren't the situation. Now, if it's being denied on some other basis, short of the protective covenants, and so much as we don't believe that maybe this should be, should be there, you know, that, that's a different story, but based on, on maintaining protective covenants, that's a civil, civil item that the people that wear robes and that down in Madison should be taken care of.
Okay. Anyone else? If not, we'd ask for your vote.
Voting in favor of version A of resolution twenty-seventeen seventy-six was nobody voting against it. Council members Granquist, Langy, Merrill, Muirin, Jackson, Faust file. Motion fails.
Okay. That moves us to version B. Need a motion and.
To introduce either B or C.
Either B or C. Again, version B is to affirm the conditional use permit. Version C is to modify what came to us before from the planning commission.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for resolution number twenty-seventeen dash seventy-six B.
Okay. Motion in second for version B of the resolution. Any further discussion on this, counsel? If not, please vote.
Voting in favor of resolution twenty-seventeen seventy-six version B. Council members Granquist, Merrill, Muirin, Jackson, Faust file voting against it. Council member Langy, motion carries. Resolution twenty-seventeen seventy-six version B is adopted.
Okay, that moves us to item number twenty-six. Look for a motion to consider approval to accept the bid of one million, two hundred and one thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars by Smeele Fire Apparatus to purchase a replacement aerial platform fire truck for the fire division.
I'll make the motion, your honor. Second.
Okay, motion in second. Shane, chief?
Evening, mayor, council. Chief Cordis and I are here, and along with the truck committee that has worked very hard. Chief and his staff have worked very, very hard on this new aerial platform. It's the single largest rolling stock purchase that we've ever made as a community, I believe. I, I hope so, anyway. One point two million dollars, just over one point two million dollars, but this is a significant piece of apparatus that's going to serve the community a long way into the future. It's replacing a seventy-four snorkel that is, seems its useful life deteriorate. Obviously, it's a seventy-four, almost as old as I am. So there's an older than, older than almost all the firefighters, except maybe one or two. Two, I think. Three was, was chief. But I just wanted to recognize the chief Cordis and the truck committee. These guys really worked hard on it. We had some competitive bids, all good companies. Fortunately, really in a lot of ways, the low bid was a company that we've worked with and is a local vendor of sorts, very local. You know, just down the street in Neely or down the street in Snyder, how you look at it, and we've had good success with that company as well. So just, that's my introduction. Chief, you want to kind of give them the fine details of what we're buying there, the height and, and the work that you and your team did, would be great.
Certainly. Thank you, Shane. This is the culmination of a two-year process. A lot of blood, sweat, and tears went into making this a good purchase, a well-thought-out purchase. Three excellent companies that we were extremely impressed with. Every one of the tours to the factories, every site visit to the various fire departments, every interaction that we had from a maintenance standpoint, all the things that go into making a good selection and the service after the sale, the committee covered a lot of ground and did a lot of good due diligence to help make sure we're making a smart purchase that's going to last for a long time. So I echo what Shane said. The committee worked extremely hard. I'm very proud of their effort. So their, their answer to me would have been, we would have been proud to have any one of these three trucks in our station. And the, the low bid, obviously, with, with Smeele's a reputable company that we've had a longstanding relationship with, but have to speak volumes to the other two. Great companies build a great product, so we would have been proud to have any of them. So we're pleased with the process. We're grateful for the support that we've gotten throughout that from, from Randy and his team and Sheila and, and Lyle at purchasing and the support that Shane and Andy have given us to get to this point. So we're, we're ready to move forward with your support and blessing. Ready to move forward with that project. It's going to take in excess of four hundred days to build this thing, so it's obviously going to be a while. We will keep that snorkel in service over the period of that time, assuming it stays functional and operates. But the truck will be a hundred footer, which gives us more maximum reach. Our current highest reach is eighty-five with that snorkel, so we can now reach the tallest residential structure in town. That gives fire chiefs a good feeling of comfort to know that you can do that, and God, God forbid that would occur, but it achieves maximum ISO rating with that hundred foot device, so it works well in the insurance world, it works well with the structures that we need to tend to, and it fits the needs of the community for, for a long, long time. So the truck committee is certainly supportive and ready to endorse this, this purchase if you're all so inclined to give us that, that now this evening. So any questions y'all might have?
I would add something.
Yeah, chief, where, is that going to be stationed at fire station number one?
Yeah, well, what we hope to do, councilman, would maintain that, that device in station one, and the seventy-five foot quint that was purchased at the time we built the second station will, will be housed up there, so we'll have an aerial in both areas of the community.
And are there any costs associated with bringing that piece of equipment in here? Or you just roll it in and it's, it fits, everything's good?
The, there will be no modifications necessary to the building. That was an important thing for us to determine early on because this is a big apparatus, and it, we wanted to make sure it fit. That's how current fire chiefs become ex-fire chiefs real quickly. When you buy a million dollar trucks, it don't fit. So we spent a considerable amount of time looking at the structural elements of the building to make sure that it will work where we want to house it. It does come with some loose equipment that will, will be part of that truck, and then we'll, over the next year, we'll buy all those miscellaneous pieces of tools that will outfit it and make it whole when it's ready to go into service. So no, no special modifications or considerations in regard to that, just taking delivery, training hard with it, and getting comfortable with its operation, and ultimately putting it into service, so.
Thank you. Steve and his staff measure twice and cut once, so, yeah, with, with, in conjunction with the Smeele guys. And also, it's good to recognize our partners out there at the Norfolk, Norfolk Rural Fire Board. Our rural fire district is paying half of the freight on this, so half of the cost, one point two, half of that's being funded by the Norfolk Rural Fire District, and they've been a great partner for many, many years, so another example of that. Old maximum that big fire only responds to one thing, and that's big water is true, and this is one of the apparatus that we produce big water if we need, so thank you for your support.
Great. Thank you, Shane. Thank you, chief. Great partnerships, great process, and good to continue a relation, relationship with Smeele, local manufacturer and employer. Any questions, discussion on this, counsel? If not, I would ask for your vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item number twenty-seven, I look for a motion to consider approval to advertise for proposals for the construction of a public safety, public works communications tower at four oh one North Twenty-Fifth Street.
Your Honor, I'll move for consideration.
Second.
Okay. Lyle. Lyle and Shane, can you give us some background on this, please?
Yes, Your Honor. You bet. Public Safety and Public Works have been working on this project as well for quite a while, over, well over a year now. And this is the beginning of a transfer of our communication system for public safety and public works and a number of private industries over to a new tower right across the road from its existing location, which is on the water tower. Lyle's bringing up the pictures and kind of give you a look, see at where we're going to place this tower. We did have a public meeting within the last 10 to 14 days right here in this room. Invited all the neighbors within 300 foot of this location to a public meeting to discuss and answer questions. That went well. Had some questions and tried to provide as many answers as we possibly could. At the end of the day, Mayor and Council, we have to put up this tower, in my opinion. We have to, this tower will increase our ability to communicate, not only on a local level, but a regional level, state level as well. It houses our, it'll house our 800 megahertz radio system that we'll be purchasing. Currently, our radio system is leased. We're going to be, we're in the process of doing a review and an RFP, gathering of information for a new radio system for our area, for, again, for all of our communication systems for the region and the area. And this will hold that equipment. This current water tower holds our VHF equipment for the county as well, for Region 11. It's the, what's called Madison North Tower. That equipment will be transferred over to this new location as well. And then also, there's a system being built out across the state that will, they've been knocking on our door to see if this tower could be used for that, a system too, which transmits data, public safety data for a backbone across the state. That equipment will be put on here as well. And then there's a few private companies that are currently on the water tower. That equipment will have the option to be moved over there. We do have lease arrangements with some private vendors as well on the current water tower site. Our goal, as your staff, is to get this tower built in the spring and then the purchase of the new radio equipment installed by next September is our goal of 2018. We hope to make that happen. As you can imagine, radio communications and the changing of radio communications is dynamic and complex, and we've brought on STS Consulting to help us with that process because we want to make sure that the new system we put in is going to last our public safety and public works providers for a long, long time, especially in the public safety arena. Our police officers and firefighters obviously use this equipment day in and day out, and they want great penetration into our buildings across the whole community. And when a firefighter or a police officer is in the heat of battle, doing what they do for the community, they rely on push-to-talk and rely on it greatly. So, this will actually, in our belief, when we did our studies for the placement of this tower, this will, it gets us a little more height, about roughly 67 more feet of tower space to put our radio equipment on. So, should give us better range and better coverage. And we hope, with the sense that we're staying with the 800 megahertz, that we're going to, we're going to have, continue to have great penetration into our basement structures and our homes and our commercial buildings, industrial buildings around the area. Then, again, tonight's just the permission to do the RFP for the tower itself. It doesn't include the radio equipment. So, this is just the tower placement. Just as a reminder, though, as we've talked about this over the years with elected officials, once the tower's placed and we make the cut over, what's really nice about this, we're going to cut all the equipment over and we'll be able to stand that system up while we're currently functioning on the water tower. Once that system's matching and we got good communications on the new tower, then all the equipment that's on the water tower will come down, and then the water tower itself will come down. If you look at the water tower, right now, it's, the old girl's looking kind of sorry. It's about $200, $250,000 roughly to repaint it, and that's an ongoing expense, expense that we've done over the years, and that's the latest estimates that we've gotten. Dennis is here. The guys are here. But, so, we can build the new tower for roughly the same cost, and then the water tower would actually come down. It's not needed for our water systems anymore, and Dennis and Todd can speak to that directly and Andy and Steve, obviously, as well. So, that's the plan. So, that site will be cleared, the buildings will be gone, and the water tower will be gone as well. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about it, but this is for the placement or the RFP for the tower. Lyle's been kind of ram-riding and working hard on that with staff, and staff's been highly involved, obviously. So, any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Shane, the only question I've been asked is how come across the street, why not on the same side?
Great question. Well, we purchased that strip of property when we did the highway, or, excuse me, 25th Street restructure. We purchased that property. There used to be a house there, if you recall. We purchased the house, the property, the whole nine yards. So, we have this blank piece of property. It's right north of the NPPD substation, so it blends in well there. We own the property. The community owns the property. And to place it back on there, again, we wanted to cut over seamlessly. So, in order to put it back on our property, we really couldn't because the infrastructure pieces that are underneath there, there's water piping and things going to the water tower and to the water mound there. So, ability for us to dig big footings there, just take a large footing, obviously, to support the tower, is very limited. And we think it's got good buffering on this site. It's got the substation to the south. It's got a nice grove of mature trees to the west. We own the property to the north, up the hill ways, so we are in control of that. There's no home straight north of this property. And then obviously, to the east is that, the current water tower and the water mound. So, we think it's got, it fits about as good as it can fit for a tower placement. So, that's why.
Any further questions? So, bottom line with this, we'll be allowed to enhance our public safety communications capabilities and our private telecom businesses will be able to increase their coverage as well.
Yeah, it allows, it really, yes, Mayor, absolutely. It allows for co-location opportunities. We do have co-location at the water tower currently, but it will allow for that and maybe even increase allowances for more co-locations. You know, site and towers in a community oftentimes comes with some controversy, and you want to try to minimize the impact they have on the area, I guess, from aesthetics and all that. So, when new companies come to town or there needs to be additional communications that need to happen, this tower will be available if it fits their needs for co-location.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion, Council? Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Rod Wilkie, 2401 Hardison Drive, and I want to thank your mayor, Mr. Mayor Moaning, and Clerk Deck for relating some electronic transmissions with me, anyway, so, and I appreciate that. I appreciate the Council's time for allowing some public discussion on this new communication tower site. And it's the placement and the location that I address this body with. To begin with, please understand that I'm not here as a label has been put on people, a NIMBY. I'm not one of those. I respectfully ask that you maybe remove that thought from your mind and certainly the media. I would hope that they remove that thought as well and just listen to the comments and concerns that I have. And please take notes on maybe something that is said, jars of thought, and I would like to open up possibly some and carry on some question and some dialogue concerning placement of this. The goal is to bring certain details to light that, and hopefully, an alternative direction in light of the proposed location. I'm by no means opposed to the needed communication tower from both the public and the private standpoint. We all have, probably all of us have cell phones in our pockets. But I do believe the citizens and maybe this council were misled on the location. And there was a question earlier on that from Councilman Faust, but the recently approved by you city budget specifically listed the location of the proposed tower as being at, I quote, "25th Street and Prospect Avenue." That's in the city budget approved. Reading that would indicate that the proposed location would be on the current city-owned property, zoned CUP, and would be on the same lot with the current water tower and the underground tank. We're now surprised to learn that the location has changed. We received a letter from the city just seven days prior to this scheduled meeting here in the chambers. Mr. Widener referred to as a planned discussion meeting regarding the 25th Street Public Safety Communication Tower. The letter indicated, and I quote, "discussion will be the use and importance of the tower, the height and location, removal of the existing water tower, et cetera." They were very helpful. Your staff was, had a good meeting, okay. Although many questions and concerns were aired at this meeting, it was really called not necessarily to discuss, but to disclose what had already been decided in the minds of staff members. So, and please also consider that administrative leadership on this issue are not environmentally impacted by that tower location. They don't live within city limits. Some of them live 15 miles and further away, and I don't think any of them live within one and a half miles of any communication tower. The Norfolk Comprehensive Plan, we talked about earlier, is an ambitious effort to beautify this city, and I commend the city for doing that, and all of you who are involved. Why would any thought ever surface for placing a, in lack of a better term, I'll call it a wart, on what should become a beautiful path all the way from the Cowboy Trail up 25th, all the way through Skyview Park and beyond? Why in the name of public safety would any thought be given to planting an 800 megahertz torch in the middle of a residential area, zoned R1? It's within 125 feet of a residential swimming pool. And next to a major street, and I brought this up at the meeting, ice develops on those tall towers, just like they do on the wind turbines. We get north winds in this country. You bring a chunk of ice off that tower down to 25th through a vehicle window, and there's going to be some problems. And why would a city place such a tower on what is described at the meeting by the public safety director as being prime residential property? And I quote that. The question came up about the north portion, and that was the term that was used. Some people will choose to build their home or business by a communication tower. That's their free choice. In this case, Norfolk is electing to disrupt and further discolor both the beauty and the value of some prime property in a prime portion of town. The city has adopted more international regulatory codes than I could ever imagine, and maybe you too. What seems to be the problem with adopting the same zoning concerning communication towers? You've got international regs on every aspect of building and plumbing and electrical, whatever. The FCC has regulations pertaining to location of communication towers. These regulations dictate that, quote, "towers may not be located in any residential zoned district." Now, Norfolk has chosen to circumvent those regulations because the codes aren't necessarily congruent with some city agenda. How it is that the entire balance of Madison County is governed by the FCC zoning regulations regarding the placement of communication towers, but Norfolk has elected to rewrite such regulations to fit some administrative ambition? We were assured at the November 7th meeting that public health safety is not an issue because everything about the tower meets FCC guidelines. Well, how can a city pick and choose which regulations they agree with and which ones they don't? Again, I'm not here as a NIMBY. The fact that we built our home in the shadow of that water tower, at the time it was a water tower, and we have the mound as our backdrop, that's testimony to the contrary. The easy and erroneous steps taken by the city to transform the now unsightly, as was pointed out, and out-of-date water tower into a cellular communication ISO, it was both, in my opinion, unethical and in direct violation of FCC regulation and guidelines. At the November 7th meeting, I used the term collateral damage when speaking, and the staff thought maybe that was a little harsh, and I indicated possibly I, it wasn't a good analogy. However, when I left the meeting and I got to just throwing all the thoughts around, actually, it is the right analogy. The city is willing with this placement of this tower, and it's a needed tower, but they're willing to take on collateral damage, both residential and community, in the march toward a goal. On a decision scale, from the standpoint of administrative authority, the major concern is for communication with the emergency response teams, and I'm all in favor of that. We want those personnel to be able to interact and act. However, there is another side of the scale, and it's weighed down by the fact that there's been disregard to FCC tower zoning regulations. There's been disregard to Norfolk zoning regulations regarding property line setback found in Section 27-284. There's disregard for corridor beautification. There's disregard for residential property values. And there's disregard for scientific evidence regarding negative impact to human health. These factors alone are enough to counterbalance that and outweigh the administrative desire for that placement at that location. Please, I ask you to choose another site. Perhaps the 12-plus acres that the city owns, north of the Country Club. It's in an ag area. It's in light or whatever the zone is, light industrial, I think. It is similar elevation to the elevation for the huge tower that was built west of the hospital, if you take a look at that. And by building a similar-height tower such as is on that site by the hospital, the city could have a similar elevation, and better yet, it is away from residential zoning. This is not an issue of not in my backyard. It is not. Rather, the statement should be, "We respectfully oppose nascent gambling." And that statement, as an acronym, spells wrong. It's wrong lawfully from FCC standpoint and Norfolk. It's wrong ethically. It's wrong aesthetically. It's wrong financially. It's wrong ethically, it's wrong aesthetically, it's wrong financially, it's wrong physically. Please move the location of this tower outside residential. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkie. Any questions for Mr. Wilkie? Thank you. Can, to address some of that, can we talk a little bit about considerations of location on this? And Dana or Lyle, I'd welcome you to come back up and provide a little info on the sighting of the tower.
You bet. Again, we, as the mayor and council knows, we brought on STS as a consultant for this project. We did look at several different locations in and around the community and on outside of the community. At the end of the day, when you put all the facts together, this site made the best sense for a number of reasons. Propagation studies showed that this is the best coverage we could have from a single stick. When we moved it outside of the community, we lost coverage, we lost penetration ability into side of the buildings. Now, you can overcome those, I suppose, by building two sticks, finding co-location sites, I would imagine you can. If you want to invest more dollars, you can do those kind of things to do it on several different sites. This is a centrally located location. It's been in existence for a long, long time. We've successfully operated our public safety and public works communication system off the water tower, which is obviously right next door. I'll remind the council that the same equipment that's on the water tower currently will be transferred over to the new tower, and it will be pretty much exactly the same. I can't promise you'll be the exact frequency, because we don't own those frequencies, but the plan hopefully is we get the RFP together and get a successful bidder is to collect those five frequencies that we have available to us, and they would become the City of Norfolk's frequencies from an eight-hundred-megahertz standpoint. So, when you looked at all the factors, as the staff looked at them, we recommended to a subcommittee that we cite this here, and the subcommittee agreed with that sentiment. We do have the fact sheet available. If you look, I mean, obviously, the web's full of all kinds of information, but I did print off FCC fact sheet. It's full of information about all kinds of topics when it comes to telecommunications. We follow FCC, we have to follow FCC rules and regulations when it comes to the use of the radio equipment. They have to be licensed, they're fully licensed. We have to, we checked with the FFA as well and got permission for the height of this tower. That's why it's one ninety-nine, not two-hundred-and-ten. So, you know, we have to do our due diligence, and any of the folks that cite on the tower have to do their due diligence as well with the FCC. So I can hand that out loud.
Very close proximity to our current fiber optic network loop, so that was placed into it as well. The MPPT connection, or excuse me, natural gas connection right next to the MPPT site. So we'll have the ability to use that for generator backup when the storm hits.
And we have natural gas there. Black Hills is committed to run natural gas to the site for our backup generation for fuel supply. All the stars are really aligned for this location. We own the property, and it's the most economical and best suited for long-term public safety communications in our town.
The concern about the ice falling off the tower, have we experienced that with the water towers?
And I can't really, I don't know if, Dennis, we've had any major concerns with that. Can it happen? Sure, ice can fall off the tower. I mean, it's true, but we have, we do have a security fence proposed around this tower that has a nice perimeter around it. You know, can small flakes of ice fall off? Yes. Can large pieces of ice on a right ice storm fall off? I assume, yes, they can. Obviously, they can, but our perimeter is large enough that it's our belief that it's not going to be an issue.
All right. Any questions?
There was a question, the zoning, that's not zoned residential right now, is it?
Yeah, it's R1 there. It is R1. Towers, if I remember right, I'll defer to you, but towers can be placed in any zoning jurisdiction with conditional use permit.
Yes, they're permitted in any zoning category, and I believe we have other towers in R1 zoning residential areas now, too.
We do.
And there was a question on setbacks? I mean, I guess I don't follow, it's not going to be in the right of way, I don't have a problem with right of way at all, at all. It's not going to be in the neighbor to the west at all. So what was the concern with setbacks? I don't understand that.
I'm not sure.
With the trail system, before we do that, you mentioned about future expansion of trail system, was that placed into consideration?
No, the trail system is on the east side of Twenty-Fifth Street. Now, there is a sidewalk next to it. Well, not even, no, there's not a sidewalk next to it. I'm corrected on that. There's no sidewalk next on the west side at that area, but there is, is there all the way?
Five-foot sidewalk.
No, I'm sorry, there is a sidewalk. But the trail system, the main trail system is on the east side of Twenty-Fifth Street.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion or question, council? If not, I would ask for your vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Moves us to item number twenty-eight. I would look for a motion to consider. Ordinance number fifty-five oh seven, as amended, approving the final plan development on property generally located half-mile south from the intersection of Omaha Avenue and South Twenty-Fifth Street. Ordinance number fifty-five oh seven, as amended, passed on first reading at the November sixth council meeting.
Your honor, I'd introduce ordinance number fifty-five oh seven on second reading.
Second.
Okay. Counselor, please come forward.
I would like it noted that I declined the opportunity to speak earlier. It's in us lawyers.
So noted.
With that being said, hopefully and respectfully, I think I might be able to expedite things this evening. Items on your agenda, items twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty, I would inform you that my clients are going to respectfully, and on their behalf, I respectfully request that these items be tabled. The reason for the tabling is, and was notified, my clients, I think, directly notified by letter, the mayor last week. The reason and purpose is, is that in March, they had purchased both families, the Merkel family and the Vandrell family purchased vacations, and so they are not even in the country, and I hate saying that in the public record, but as a result, they are not returning to the thirtieth on the night of the thirtieth. So at this time, I would request that this be tabled, and again, respectfully of this council, to December eighteenth for all three of these items. So, if there's any questions.
Questions for Tim on that?
I believe counsel from Nucor, you know, has been informed last week as well. So, I apologize to Sarah Allman, I did not get her notified last week or until this evening, but Nucor Volcrafts represented was notified last week. Thank you all.
Tim, what date was that?
Eighteenth. I could be wrong on that. Beth, is that the next?
Okay.
December seventeenth?
No, it's eighteen.
All right. Request, thank you, Tim. Request to table items twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty to the meeting on December eighteenth has been made. Would require a motion.
I'll make the motion, your honor.
Motion in a second to table items number twenty-eight, number twenty-nine, and thirty to the meeting of the Norfolk City Council on December eighteenth. Any discussion on that, council? Seeing none, I'd ask for your vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion to table carries.
That moves us to item number thirty-one. Look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-five thirteen amending section twenty-four dash one sixty-four to remove the parking restriction on the east side of North Pine Street from Norfolk Avenue to Nebraska Avenue, and on the north side of East Nebraska Avenue from First Street to Pine Street. Your honor, I'd move consideration of ordinance number fifty-five thirteen.
Second.
Chief, please pass in on this.
Your honor, members of the council, I believe that this is the ordinance that we have been looking for for some time. This is to restore the parking situation that existed before the actual East Norfolk Avenue Bridge project began. We made these changes, or recommended that you make these changes, so that we could facilitate what we expected to be additional flow of traffic through that residential area. And fortunately, or unfortunately, whichever your viewpoint may be, there was additional traffic that was coming through there. So, the Norfolk Avenue is now open, you're able to cross the bridge, and so we would like to recommend that we restore the parking on those two streets as existed before the project began.
I don't think anybody's going to argue about that. Getting back to normal, step by step. Any questions for Chief on that? Very good. Thank you, Chief. Okay, no further discussion. Short title, please, Beth.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend section twenty-four dash one sixty-four of the official city code to remove the parking prohibition on the east side of Pine Street from Norfolk Avenue to Nebraska Avenue, to remove the parking prohibition on the north side of Nebraska Avenue from First Street to Pine Street, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance fifty-five thirteen carries on first reading.
Your honor, I move we suspend the rules in pass ordinance fifty-five thirteen on second and third.
Second.
Okay, motion in second to suspend the rules. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance fifty-five thirteen carries on second and third.
Item number thirty-two, look for motion to consider resolution number twenty-seventeen dash eighty-four to remove stop signs that control the following locations, east and westbound traffic at the intersection of Pine and Barash Avenue, westbound and southbound traffic at the intersection of Pine Street and Nebraska Avenue, north and southbound traffic at the intersection of Cottonwood and Nebraska Avenue, and southbound traffic at the intersection of Oak Street and Nebraska Avenue. Chief, didn't go far. I don't think there's, oh, I'm sorry. Getting ahead of myself, we're almost done. Motion, please, for that.
Move consideration of resolution twenty-seventeen eighty-four.
Second.
Okay, motion in second now, chief, please.
Again, this was a resolution that seeks to remove the stop signs that were placed there for the bridge project. Again, anticipating there would be additional flow of traffic, these stop signs were put at these locations to allow for traffic coming from Norfolk Avenue up around to First Street and vice versa, allow them to have a through street to go through there and eliminate any control or uncontrolled intersections that might create collisions when there was some question of right of way. Again, since the bridge is now open and traffic is allowed to go through on Norfolk Avenue, we will request that we have the stop signs removed to put the streets back in the condition they were before the project began.
Very good. Any questions for chief?
Just, chief, yeah, it was great that we did this. Any kind of record of how many accidents we did have over that duration or didn't have? I'm hoping that it didn't have.
I can't tell you exact amount of collisions that we had. I will tell you that I thought it was surprisingly few. We had several more on First Street than we did over on Norfolk Avenue. But again, we did some monitoring of the locations, and we found that some of the issues that were involved were drivers who were not making proper turns as they came off of Nebraska because they were seeking to be able to make an immediate right turn onto Barash. And so they would either wait and back up traffic, or they would try to cut out and get across. But even having said that, not as many as I thought. The last time that I looked, it's been a few weeks back, I believe we had around twelve, maybe thirteen, and considering the change of the traffic flow there, I think that was really quite remarkable.
But I'd have to fully support that, too, because twelve or thirteen accidents with the kind of numbers that we talked about, that the traffic counts bore out for what was going over, that is credit to the, not only to your enforcement group that way, but also to the people that traveled that. I had to travel because of some projects we had going on in that area, and I was extremely surprised at the low speed that people utilized through there the majority of the time that way. So, not only kudos to your department, but also kudos to the driving public that utilized that area.
I would agree with you. The potential was there for a lot more collisions, and I think nobody really likes change. And when you're used to driving a certain route and you have to change that route, it can be difficult to make that adjustment. And I think the vast majority of the drivers did a very good job of making that adjustment. And sometimes tempers can flare, but again, I think that they did a very good job of understanding what the project was, and that it was going to be a temporary situation, and I think they did very well with it.
Thanks, thanks for enforcement of that. It took a while, but we got there. We got it done.
We did.
Thank you, chief. Okay. Any further discussion on that, council? If not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution twenty-seventeen eighty-four is adopted.
Almost there. Item number thirty-three, look for consideration of ordinance number fifty-five fourteen amending section two dash five of the code to require an applicant appealing a decision of the code official under the property maintenance code to pay publication and court reporter costs in addition to the appeal fee, to update annual and quarterly parking space rent, and to update the cost of a group season pass to Aqua Venture Water Park.
Your honor, all for consideration, order number fifty-five fourteen.
Second.
Okay, motion in second. It's like part of this is housekeeping. Clint, maybe Lyle, whoever can speak to the different aspects of this, please go ahead.
I'll just speak to the first one. I guess there's three things here, just to talk to, very briefly. The first one is just making some consistency between the way that other appeals are handled, whether they're to the Board of Adjustment or other various boards like that. And so that makes the first one consistent with the way that those other ones are done. I think that Brad's going to talk to the parking issue, and the third thing just raises the rates just a little bit, keeps in accordance with what other people are doing across the state.
Mayor Mooney and council members, I'm here tonight on behalf of Norfolk Vehicle Parking District Number One. We are requesting an increase in the annual rate charged for parking in the parking districts lot downtown. We are requesting an annual rate of sixty-five dollars for parking paid for in advance in a full year, for the full year, and seventeen fifty for a quarter for parking purchased quarterly. This is charged to employees and residents in the downtown who wish to park in the lots. And customer parking is free and will always remain free. The current annual rate is fifty-five dollars per year and fifteen dollars for a quarter, so it's not a huge raise in the price. We ask for you that you would consider granting this increase. Do you have any questions for me?
Brad, what did you say it currently is?
Currently, it's fifty-five dollars per year.
Okay.
And fifteen dollars a quarter, and then we're asking for an increase to sixty-five dollars.
Pretty modest.
Seventeen fifty.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Okay. Thank you, Brad.
Thanks.
Any questions or discussion on the other components of this change? Any questions or discussion on the other components of this change? If not, short title, please, Beth.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend Section 2-5 of the Official City Code to require an applicant appealing a decision of the code official under the Property Maintenance Code to pay publication and court reporter costs in addition to the appeal fee to update annual and quarterly parking space rent, to update the cost of a group season pass to AquaVenture Water Park, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5514 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I move we suspend the rules in pass ordinance 5514 on second and third.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, motion in second to suspend the rules. If no discussion on that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5514 carries on second and third.
All right, and it's in the books. That concludes this, concludes this meeting of the Norfolk City Council. Evening.